Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today's Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. This proceeding is being broadcast on channel thirty-five. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting channel thirty-five. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Katz.
Present.
You're present, and Katz. Commissioner Laird.
Present.
President Katz.
Still present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Present but not aware.
Commissioner Pender.
Present and giggling.
Five board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President.
Thank you, Shandar. Thank you, welcome everybody. My apologies for being a couple of minutes late. Try not to let that happen and not to inconvenience folk, but welcome to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the Department of Water and Power. Just jump right into the agenda. We have a couple of things that I'm pulling off the agenda, so I might as well let everybody know that now. Also, at the same time, to those, I'm not going to call out anything other than items, but there were a number of things that were not in shape to do today, and I didn't feel, so we're pulling those items, but not happy about it. So we're going to have to work on making sure the stuff that comes into the office here is ready to go. It's not fair to people who've come down here or are interested to then have to delay it. So in that, let's see, K-two, Adam, K-two is deferred, K-three is deferred, and K-four is deferred. Okay, got it. I'm sorry, K-four is going to be, will not, will be pulled off of consent. We have a commissioner needs to recuse themselves.
Yes, I will recuse myself on K-four, Pender.
So that's back on the agenda.
And when that's discussed, I'll step out.
Okay.
Thank you.
You can put your head on your desk and cover your ears if you want. Whatever's easy.
And K-eight, we're going to pull so that...
Got it. And K-eight is going to be pulled so that we have a speaker on that item when we get to it. So, all right. Sorry, I'm a little rusty on chairing committees. It's been a while. Public comments? From the public who?
May I open?
Public comments are now open if somebody would like to make a comment or not.
The first speaker is going to be Suzanne Cafflish. Suzanne Cafflish. Good morning, Speaker. Please be reminded that you will have two minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Suzanne. I am a senior associate with the Better World Group. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Los Angeles County Electric Bus and Truck Coalition. We are here, we wanted to take the opportunity to welcome President Katz as the new Chair of the Board of Commissioners, and also take the opportunity to introduce our coalition, which is composed of environmental, environmental justice, and labor advocates. And we work together on achieving zero emission electric bus and truck adoption with robust workforce standards included. We are currently supporting the efforts of the L.A. Unified School District to eliminate pollution that impacts student health, as well as tackle climate change and help meet the city's one-hundred percent clean energy by two thousand thirty-five goal. And we are really strongly supporting the partnership between the LADWP and LAUSD on zero emission school buses and vehicle-to-grid integration. And so as part of that, we'd like to encourage LADWP to take the following steps. First off, in the short term, we'd like to see LADWP execute the memorandum of understanding with the Unified School District. First, we want to thank DWP for its hard work on this unprecedented agreement. This MOU is the first step to fund and procure necessary charging equipment and infrastructure for the school district's zero emission fleet, and we're looking to the Board's leadership to help finalize prioritizing this MOU. Secondly, looking a little further out, we want to see DWP expand the vehicle-to-grid pilot program to meet the needs of LAUSD and other entities. We think that this is a really exciting opportunity for grid resiliency, but we'd like to see the program expanded beyond its current capacity limits. And also, we'd like to see the program requirements revised for LAUSD because they're preventing the program from taking full advantage of the school district's very large capacity. Finally, in the long term, we'd like to see DWP commit to major infrastructure investments to support bus charging and vehicle-to-grid. Thank you so much. We look forward to collaboration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Yasmin Aguilidis. Yasmin Aguilidis.
Thank you. Good morning, President Katz and Commissioners. My name is Yasmin Aguilidis. I'm a senior attorney with Earth Justice, and I'm also a proud member of the Los Angeles County Electric Truck and Bus Coalition. We really wanted to introduce ourselves, so we have a few members out here today. A little bit more about our coalition. We're a blue-green coalition of environmental, labor, and environmental justice groups, and we're really committed to the twin aims of cleaning our air and ensuring that the transition to zero emissions creates good, family-sustaining, high-wage careers. So our members include Earth Justice, Sierra Club, Jobs to Move America, ECR Communities for Environmental Justice, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Eleven. Our coalition's been working to achieve clean air and good jobs for the last eight years. So in that time, we played a pivotal role in helping L.A. Metro, LADOT, and Santa Monica commit to, you know, adopting their nation-leading commitments to one-hundred percent zero-emission electric buses by two thousand thirty. We're continuing to help those transit agencies today in that transition. And right now, for the last few years, we have been working really closely with L.A. Unified School District to help them transition their bus fleet to fully electric. So I'll reiterate two of the points and hopefully add a little bit of detail that, expand on what my colleague Suzanne said, but we really have two asks that we are bringing today. First, that the Board's leadership execute and finalize the memorandum of understanding. This agreement represents a critical first step to fund and procure the necessary charging equipment, infrastructure, and buses for LAUSD's zero-emission fleet. And then second, that DWP revise the V2G pilot program requirements to meet the needs of LUSD and other large public entities that are committed to transitioning to zero emissions. The pilot program's current capacity limit is, we believe, hampering its success. Right now, there's a bit of an arbitrary requirement that any one customer may not be assigned a larger capacity. We submitted a letter, so hopefully there's a little bit more detail in there. Would love to continue to work with you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Armando Camarena. Armando Camarena.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm representing U.S. Auctions as a CEO and owner. We are a minority business enterprise, SBE-certified, SBTW, California Department General Service, LSBE-certified, the City of Los Angeles. Despite this certifications, under supplier diversity, we've not had an opportunity to bid on the contract for the LADWP in over the past twenty years. That's because the LADWP decided to piggyback on the LA contract and forego the practice of putting it out to bid. I have here two City of Los Angeles contracts. One that started in May of nineteen twenty, ending this year in May of twenty-four. The extended contract from May twenty twenty-four to, starting again in May twenty-five, expiring, each contract expires twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-thirty.
Oh, my God.
I contacted Michael Brennan, who is the Operations Support and Aviation Services. We've been doing contracts since I began the business in nineteen twenty-two thousand five. We've had contracts with the Southern California Edison, the Gas Company, San Diego Gas and Electric since two thousand five, but we bid on those contracts every five years. Supplier diversity, we want the chance to bid on the Department of Water and Power contract. It's that simple. Another thing that you should note is your current contractor is a company called J.J. Kane. They bought five years ago, they were bought out by, they bought out another local auction company called Ken Porter. Now, Ken Porter sold it, and they inherited the LADWP contract. J.J. Kane is owned by...
The Chair gave him permission to continue.
She's just collecting documents.
Yes, you have documents for each one of you. There you go. I'm sorry. There they are. So getting back to, Ken Porter was bought out by J.J. Kane. J.J. Kane is owned by Altech Industries out of Birmingham, Alabama. They're the largest producers of aerial equipment in the world. They are listed on the stock exchange as three-point-three billion dollars. Our small company that we started in two thousand five is only worth thirty million.
Sounds like you've had a good run.
So I don't want to go on and on. You know the gist of our problems. Supplier diversity, practice it then. We need the opportunity to bid on the contract.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, any comments on that?
No, and I'm not particularly familiar with exactly which contracts he's talking about, but one of the things that we have been looking at is when we piggyback, and I know the city attorney's been also interested in this, part of the efforts that we're making through Greg's operation in DEI is to break down our contracts into smaller pieces so more people have an opportunity to bid, and also looking at exactly these kind of issues so that we do get more bids on the street. So it is something that we're working on, and we'll look at this exact situation.
Okay. And someone will get in contact with the gentleman and follow up, please?
Yes, yeah, matter of fact, Gregory, can you?
Yes.
Give him a card. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I think she's coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The last speaker is Theo Figuracine.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Theo Figuracine, and I'm a senior researcher with Jobs to Move America. I'm here as part of the L.A. County Electric Bus and Truck Coalition, so we welcome President Katz as the new Chair of the Board of Commissioners and take the opportunity to just introduce a little bit more of our work. My colleagues already spoke a little bit about the coalition's work, but I wanted to kind of emphasize and highlight some details. Our coalition played pivotal roles in supporting the L.A. Metro, the L.A. DOT, and the City of Santa Monica Big Blue Bus in adopting nation-leading commitments to achieve one-hundred percent zero-emission buses by two thousand thirty, and we hope to work with you all towards those same goals. So we want to thank the LADWP for its memorandum of understanding with LUSD. The MOU helps drive home the reality of electric buses for public schools. This is clean air for our children, who are our future. Thus, we want to express our continued support. We also want to encourage you to expand the innovative V2G pilot program to meet the needs of LUSD and other entities, because it's pretty incredible to think that as agencies like Metro and LUSD adopt more electric vehicle fleets and heavy vehicles to promote clean air and green jobs, the same vehicles could be used for grid resiliency, especially during peak strain in the summertime. This is a rare win-win-win situation. Additionally, in expanding LUSD's capacity limits will help LADWP take advantage of LUSD's larger capacity. Lastly, we'd encourage LADWP to commit to major infrastructure investments to support bus and charging V2G integration. This long-term win-win-win situation requires major upfront investments to make this a success, and this is a situation where we have green jobs, green air, and grid resiliency, and it should be a model not only for the rest of California, but for the rest of the country, and we hope to continue working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Katz, since that MOU was before you and I joined, for sure, could you see that each of the Commissioners gets a copy of that so we can refresh ourselves, since we have these speakers here today, and we know exactly what they're talking about?
No, I appreciate that. Fred, you were...
In addition, there is a report by the OPA on that MOU as well. It's a startup MOU. It is, quite frankly, without the quid pro quo on helping with the reporting on this, it's too generous to continue beyond the pilot in terms of the pricing.
When you said quid pro quo, you definitely got my attention, so...
There is a cooperative program required to study this, and it was a startup of this. It's still starting up, as far as I know. There's no even initial report on the pilot yet. But everybody else, there are a lot of people who want the same pricing, but it's not reasonable to extend that pricing.
Thank you, Mr. Pico.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Moving along. Marty? Report by the General Manager.
Thank you, and good morning, President Katz and board members. It's my pleasure to give a few brief comments this morning. First of all, I think now that we can probably say we're safely past the prolonged winter and early spring rains, I want to take, you know, one more opportunity to thank publicly all of our crews that worked so hard during the winter storms, particularly the last several months. The men and women that keep the lights on and the water running have really done remarkable work this year. We had some tremendous storms and comparatively very few outages as a result of those, not just because of our restoration efforts, but also because of the work that we were doing to take care of aging power poles and failing facilities in the field, hardening our grid, particularly in the hillside areas. So all that's really, really paying off. In end of March, we had another storm elevated to a level-four response. We had crews out, you know, all during that storm, working in the worst of conditions to make sure that people were restored. And compared, again, compared to numbers of the past, even though we've had outages, our number of people out at any one time has been less than what you've seen in the past in comparable storms, and our speed of recovery has been tremendous. And so I want to, again, you know, thank our men and women in the field that are making this happen and really doing the work that, what this company is all about. Of course, we've had a lot of rain and water to deal with, and we've done a lot of work in the Owens Valley as well to make sure that we don't have flood damage from all the waters that's come down, so much of it in short order. And of course, if you think about it, back in the beginning of the year, we were tied with the lowest water year on record, and now we are above normal in pretty short order. So I'd like to turn over to Ensmo to talk about where we are with our snowpack this year and give us the good news from April first. Why we use April first? We always talk about it.
Marty, also, let me just, you know, on behalf of the Commission, also, thank you and the Department and the men and women that do a phenomenal job. You know, TV always leads with the worst-case scenario, but there's thousands of others that happen every day, and DWP employees do one heck of a job, and we're all very proud of them and very appreciative. Glad they're there and glad they're doing what they're doing.
Thank you for those words. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. So yes, I wanted to provide a water supply update. This might be the last one since this is the beginning of the, what, kind of runoff year, unless the Board desires to have additional updates. This past winter, as you know, we experienced a lot of atmospheric rivers and just rain events that brought us a lot of water and snow to California, which is great. The April first snowpack survey in the Sierra suggests that we actually went above what's considered normal. In the Northern Sierra, which is where the water for the state water project originates from, right now, the snowpack is at one-hundred-and-twenty-three percent as of April first. Yes, which is great news. The Eastern Sierra, which is where the LA Aqueduct collects its water from, is at one-hundred-and-nine percent of normal. Just so you'd like to know, April first, we're at one-hundred-and-three percent. Since April first to now, we're one-hundred-and-nine percent. And apparently, there's additional storms that might be coming down, so we certainly continue to add to the snowpack, which is great news. I mentioned this at the last meeting as well. The Department of Water Resources for the State of California allocated thirty percent to their contractors. There is a pretty good chance that they are actually going to increase that even more, which means there should be plenty of water coming to the state water project to fill the needs of Southern California and through all the state water project contractors as well. The Upper Colorado Region, which is where the water is collected for the Colorado River itself, is doing well as well. The snowpack there, or the snowwater equivalent, which is the water content, is around one-hundred-and-fourteen percent of normal. So that as well is above one-hundred percent, above normal. Locally, when it comes to stormwater capture, I'm really happy to report that we have captured ninety-four thousand acre-feet of stormwater. This is what we captured and be able to then percolate down into the groundwater basin to recharge it. Downtown L.A. actually got over twenty inches of rain. Our average rainfall in downtown L.A. is around fifteen inches, so we're close to one-hundred-and-fifty percent of normal there. The San Fernando Valley saw twenty-three inches of rain, and apparently, and counting. So certainly, we've had a really good water year, and I appreciate the comments made about the men and women of the Department and the hard work they do. My aqueduct staff worked really hard in managing the runoff last year and managing the snowpack and the runoff that's going to be coming, so we appreciate those words. And that's it, Marty.
If I could, Marty, and so, in terms of storage that we control, where are we in terms of percent?
Along the aqueduct, we have nine reservoirs that we manage, and they're all at different levels depending on the operations. The largest body of water that we have is called Crowley Lake. It has a capacity of one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand acre-feet. Right now, that reservoir is probably sitting above one-seventy, so it's pretty full at this point. So what's going to happen is my staff is in the process of moving water out from that reservoir into other locations to allow for the runoff when it starts, to be able to actually be stored over there. So from a storage perspective, we're doing really well, and right now, it's making room for the runoff that's going to start once the temperature rises.
Right. From snow melt.
Correct. Once it starts melting, yes.
I've always thought that one of the worst possible jobs to have would be as a dam manager who has to decide, you know, in December, do I release water because I expect it to rain or not release water, and then it does rain, you know?
So... My operations managers are probably rejoicing you saying that because they, every single year, it's a stressful conversation.
You have a lot of stress retirements out of that job.
Luckily for me, not yet. They're all hanging in there, but it's a challenge that all water managers have, and you're absolutely right. You have to make a decision, and you kind of have to predict what's going to happen and making those decisions. So luckily, we have really good talented staff, and they've done a great job managing it.
That's great. That's great news. That's great news.
Very good news. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of quick questions, too, while we're still on the topic? Ensmo, that ninety-four thousand acre-feet of water that we captured back into groundwater, is that all in basin, or is that in the entire system?
That's in the basin. That mainly is going to be actually in the San Fernando Valley.
Yeah.
Where we have most of the stormwater capture facilities. So yes.
Sure. And that's, will you remind me what percent of our annual stormwater capture goal that is for two thousand thirty-five? It's pretty high.
Yes, so our goal is to be able to have a total capture capacity of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand acre-feet. Once again, the capacity, that assumes you got no more rainfall.
Very different than the actual capture.
Right now, we have a capacity around eighty-four thousand acre-feet, but since we had a wetter-than-normal year, we were able to capture more than eighty-four thousand acre-feet. So we are proceeding and moving forward with additional projects along with our partners like LA County to be able to increase our capture capacity to reach the one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand acre-feet, which is our goal.
Yeah, really proud of the Measure W wins that we've seen come out of the water system for that stormwater capture. It's great.
Absolutely. We have nine projects that we went through Measure W. We got funding for seven of them, equalling around seventy-five million. Actually, I think we got a little extra money recently as well, and those projects are going to be great because not only do they provide the stormwater capture component, but there's also a recreational component, because we're going to build this under parks that are right now in disrepair. So the community will get a brand-new park. We will get the stormwater capture, plus also the water quality improvements as well when we divert the water away. So win for everybody.
Well done to your team.
So can I just have a quick question, which actually deals with the, you know, making sure that the community understands that we still want to behave like we are responsible water users? And so how that message gets across?
We...
I was ready to answer that question.
No, and I was going to look at him.
Sure. Our communications team has been working with the water system to continue our investment in both advertising as well as awareness and outreach regarding water conservation. In prior years, say, more than ten years ago, we would have scaled it all the way back to practically zero. We have not done that this year. I can get you the figure exactly. I don't want to misquote it off the top of my head, but there's a substantial investment that we have planned and coordinated with Water System to continue messaging things like replacing landscape with drought-tolerant plants and other initiatives that don't require emergency action, but are more investments for the long run in water conservation.
Could I add something to that, just for context? So typically, you know, we measure the gallons per person per day or the GPCD. Our GPCD right now is at one-hundred-and-three. So despite the fact that we had a pretty wet year last year, we are having a really good year this year. We haven't seen that rebound in demands. So that's a testament, really, to the dedication of Angelenos in conserving and making conservation a way of life. I can tell that in the last fifteen years, we've reduced our water usage by thirty percent, and we're going to continue pushing. Our goal is to get down to a GPCD of a hundred, and we're well in our ways to achieving that as well. So we're not seeing that rebound in demands that you would expect to see when you have a good water year.
That's great. And me, his point's well taken. This is, you know, conservation's got to go every day, every month, every year. When I first got involved in water issues, which was a bunch of years ago, an acre foot was defined as the amount of water a family of four uses in a year, and today, that's the amount of water two families of four use in a year because of conservation inefficiencies and the changes that have been made in the system. So it's moving in the right direction, and Joe's going to keep pushing the word out there, and hopefully, everybody else will as well. So that's great news.
My other quick question for you, Ensmo, is on, you know, we have had two wonderful wet years. We're talking about a new operations plan for the coming year. Do you have an idea of where we are on Mono Lake levels and when we'll hear at the Board what our plan is to sort of maintain some of these gains throughout the system, but especially in Mono Lake?
Sure, absolutely. So we, now that we have the snowpack numbers, we're currently working on the operations plan. That operation plan, it actually is due in the next week or so.
That's what I thought.
So we are putting together the plan that's going to identify where we expect to be getting or collecting the water from. Specifically, when it comes to Mono Lake, for the last couple of years, we have been limited to forty-five-hundred acre-feet of export from Mono Lake, and that export is based on the elevation of Mono Lake itself. For those who don't know, we divert the water before it goes into Mono Lake. That's where we get the water supply from, that basin. We have limited that to the forty-five-hundred based on the elevation of Mono Lake. That lake has risen quite a bit because of the really nice wet years we've had. We are working on that plan, and we're going to be putting something together that we'll bring to you for your review. We're going to be having some additional discussions on that pretty soon. The key there is to make sure that we are being as efficient as possible with the use of water. We have a lot of water in the former snow right now, and we need to make sure that we manage that, not just for water supply, but also for the protection of the communities up in the Owens Valley.
But specifically, that plan is going to look at how we maintain those gains in wet years and...
So right now, one of the things that we're doing along with the Mono Lake Committee is we're working on some modeling scenarios. My staff has been working with the MLC staff as well as other parties for the last, I would say, four to five months now, working on modeling scenarios that would allow us to preserve more, to be able to gain more during the wet winters and minimize the impacts during the dry years. So that's being worked on. The expectation is that we're going to have the initial results from that modeling effort. modeling effort in the next month or so. We already have a meeting scheduled with Mono Lake, CDFW, and some of the other parties. And that'll be the first basically run of where we are with that. My expectation is that we're going to review that, make some tweaks to it, but we are well on our way in that process.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me hijack. I know this is the last one of these we'll get for a few months, so I just wanted to get those questions in.
And just to put in perspective, you know, of course, our goal is to have the majority of our water supplied locally. And so with the ninety-four thousand acre foot of spreading, that's about twenty percent of the annual water demand. So that's a huge portion of the annual demand. Couple of that goes hand in hand with the groundwater treatment projects that Antomo has going on. There's what, four, I think, under construction now? And those will be completed largely toward the end of this calendar year. And so when that happens, we'll have not only put a lot of water into the ground, but also the ability to pull it back out and serve it and meet all the drinking water standards.
Yeah, we, by the way, Mario, we also have a groundwater replenishment project that we're going to be bringing to the board. It's a design build. It's in the design phase. In the next couple of months, we are going to bring it to the board for approval when we have the guaranteed maximum price. That project has the potential to generate twenty-seven thousand acre feet of recycled water that will be used to recharge the San Fernando Basin. Just yesterday, I was at the Metropolitan Water District Committee meeting advocating for local resource project money from NWD. We applied for one hundred and thirty-nine million dollars over a twenty-five year period to to basically defray some of that cost from our ratepayers. But that's a pretty significant project that's going to also increase our local water supply.
Yeah, taking us up to one-eleven, a lot closer to one-fifty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just one, just quickly, I want to make sure that one of the greatest beneficiaries of this water is the urban forest, please, because we talk about, we just don't talk about it enough. And, you know, somehow, all this reclaimed water and, you know, we get a lot of pushback from LAUSD and that that whole issue has to be resolved. Trees matter.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mia.
Thank you.
Now, Marty.
Thank you. So I'd like to turn it forward to Simon to give us kind of review where we've been with the storms and the progress in the power system and how you've seen what was going on this last winter and the successes you've seen.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I would start with the very important meeting we had in late March. This is a kickoff meeting for our 2024 Strategic Long Term Resource Plan Advisory Group. This was, this meeting was held in, on March 21st. The, what we call the SLTRP or the Strategic Long Term Resource Plan is DWP's Empower Systems Comprehensive and Actionable Power Plan that's aligned with both state and local mandates as well as measures for decarbonizing and transitioning the utility sector here at DWP. This plan will guide us and to maintain a safe electric service to the city and that ensures reliability, resiliency, and provides affordability and in an equitable manner to all our customers. Feedback received from the advisory group participants will inform rigorous modeling efforts within the department and it will also help us in identifying optimal pathways as well as resource mix combinations that will be required to reach our clean energy goals. Advisory group participants include city and regional agencies, community-based organizations, environmental justice advocates, and business organizations, our labor partners, local universities, and large customers. Meetings will be held on a bi-monthly basis and will conclude around September. We'll provide an update on feedback that we're receiving from our advisory committee in the coming months. Second item I have is very good news for Power System. Power System is receiving an American Public Power Association's 2023 Safety Excellence Award at the platinum status. This is due to years of reduction of recordable cases. Only four utilities are receiving such a status. It's a testament to our commitment to safety, not only the safety of our employees, but safety of our customers and public safety as well. As we speak, staff are receiving that award in New Orleans, Louisiana. It is a big award for the department and really motivating to our crews and employees at large.
That's great.
Yesterday, we experienced the April 8 solar eclipse. I'm happy to report that LED WP did not have any issues with reduction of solar energy. It was a momentary blimp, but I think it was a very successful day for us. As Marty mentioned earlier, over the past four months, our crews have been working twenty-four hours a day, on call several weekends in a row to ensure that we keep the lights on within the city of Los Angeles. And that will continue and we'll provide an update on how we are resourcing our crews. And I just want to take this opportunity to chat, to thank all our crew members out there for their dedicated service to this city. That will end my remark.
Thank you, Simon. So this past month has been Women's History Month, and we've had quite a number of activities. We've had a month-long social media campaign. We had our first ever Women in Trade Summit that we saw pictures from at the last meeting, as well as staff interviews with local news outlets. And then last weekend, on Saturday, we had our third annual Women's Nature Walk at Encino Reservoir. I'd like to turn it over to Greg Reed to tell us about that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Marty. And it really was a very fitting culmination of our Women's History Month celebration and an opportunity for us to bring our staff together to enjoy the Encino Reservoir property as we queue up the slideshow here. And please go ahead and show the slideshow as I make my remarks. So this was a really nice gathering of one hundred and seventy-five employees and their families. We had the pleasure of having our board president, Commissioner Katz, and Commissioner Lehrer with us, who all gave remarks. We also had our IBW Local 18 Business Manager, Gus Carrona, who also addressed the attendees as well. And we had a really nice three and a half mile walk around the reservoir, observing all of the facets of the beautiful nature that our more than a thousand acre property provides. Commissioner Katz, if I may hand it over to you to highlight some of the facets of the nature walk that we had?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I just want to echo the thank yous, you know, and on behalf of the board, really appreciated all the hard work that went into this event. I know Helen Olivares and the Water Ops team did a lot to prepare the property and to organize all of this. Latonya Bogan from DEI. I know our comms team and the sign shop or print shop to make all those beautiful nature signs. And IBW as well was a big support. I think Sean Pruitt was one of the organizers and Gus came to speak, which we really appreciated. So it really was a wonderful event. It was a beautiful day. It was an opportunity for employees and especially our women on staff to to gather with families and enjoy the sunshine, get some walk and some steps in for health. But this property is particularly unique as one of the properties that are in the Santa Monica Mountains and really have a lot of rich habitats. So we wanted to kind of highlight that connection to nature, especially in light of the recent biodiversity access to nature and nature-based solutions motion that was passed and our commitments that we've made as a department. So the different signs that DWP staff created highlight different indicator species. This is part of LA City's commitment to biodiversity was to identify these very visible, we call them charismatic indicator species. So things like bobcat and red-tailed hawk and stuff that you might actually be able to see and recognize and take pictures of. So we shared some of the information about the local wildlife. We had a lot of wildflowers blooming. So it was really a beautiful day and just want to thank all the staff whose hard work went into making it happen. It was really nice to get to gather with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Katz. And just as a correction, so Sean McLeod from IBW in partnership with Latonya Bogan in the Women's Council and also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Saying too many names fast.
And Elise Pruitt.
Elise Pruitt and Sean McLeod from SUI. So thank you. Yes, it was very great to meet everyone and sorry for getting the names wrong. Thank you.
And it was really great partnership. I think they're doing phenomenal work and it continues. And so I'll, if we could pause on this particular slide, we had a number of partners who supported the event with booths to share information with all of our attendees. We got our health partners. We had our Water Empower Credit Union as well as SUI and Local 18 providing items and having a raffle. So all around, it was a lovely Saturday event with great weather, beautiful views, and a really nice opportunity to get our steps in. With that, I'd like to maybe take a moment to advertise our next event that is led by the Women's Council, and that's going to be on May 4th at our Truesdale property on Saturday. And it's our Women's Wellness and Career Expo. And so this particular event will be our second annual event, and we're expecting a large turnout from the community. And with that, the focus of this event is to provide a platform for women and girls to explore career opportunities within LA Department of Water and Power. Our goal is to encourage diversity, equity, and inclusion within our workforce by highlighting career paths for women in traditionally male-dominated roles. DWP will provide resources at information booths showcasing a wide variety of our career paths and how to get your foot in the door in terms of jobs at DWP. We also have a process to incentivize attendees to engage all of our vendors, and there'll be prizes for the people who really engage all of our booths. And so we have career booths showcasing a number of our folks from the water system, power system, from the fleet, a wide range of services that'll be showcased. We will have our helicopter there. We're going to have our Ford Lightning truck and other vehicles to showcase and allow girls and women to see that and experience that. We also will have wellness booths as well. So overall, there are going to be thirty booths. We have one of our council members, Amelda Padilla, as a confirmed speaker on our main stage. We're still working on the program for that main stage event, but we're happy to have Amelda, Council Member Amelda Padilla's support and participation in this upcoming event. So with that being said, I just want to encourage everyone to consider joining us on May 4th, which should be a very successful and exciting Women's Career and Wellness Expo. So with that, I'll turn it back over to our general manager.
Thank you, Greg. And we had, what, about a thousand people in more last year at our first one? Is that correct?
I was not here for that one.
It was a lot of folks. It was a lot of folks. And we had a lot of employees, both men and women, that brought their kids and especially their daughters to 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 experience it. So it was very well received and very well attended. So we're looking forward to that again.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me just add on to that. We're targeting middle school girls, high schoolers, trade school, community college. So it's a huge outreach and we're hoping to attract a very large contingent of girls and women to consider DWP as a, as an employer of choice.
Thank you, Greg. So lastly, I just want to mention that we had another one of our customer service support Saturdays on March 23rd. These have proven to be invaluable to be able to help us get out into the community and reach out to our customers. And so our customer service centers staff, along with the local service provider Pace, had a customer service Saturday centers in North Hills, Watts, and Crenshaw offices. All told, we had four hundred and eighty-four customers show up in person to come and seek assistance. We were able to enroll another one hundred and twenty-one of them in Easy Save programs and and help answer other questions that they have and help them engage in our other programs. So this is something that Customer Services has done on a regular basis throughout the city, a way to put a face behind the Water and Power Bill and have it easy for folks to show up and at a good time on a weekend when they have time to show up and us to make ourselves available to help them in the system with their issues. So, Joe, thank you to you and the customer service staffer for handling that. So unless there's any questions, that's the completion of my report.
All right. Any other questions? Marty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You're up.
No extensive comments. We have looked at and support items two, five, six, and we support the deferral of item three.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, moving along. Anyone have any motions they want to introduce for further consideration, future considerations at this point? No? Okay. Discussion with neighborhood councils.
No community impacts. Oh, I'm sorry. There was one community impact statement from Northwest Wood. It has been attached to the agenda and provided to all commissioners.
Okay. On neighborhood councils, moving right along. Okay, item H.
Okay. Based on the items that were polled, motion to approve items one, five, six, and seven.
Seconded.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
President Katz?
Aye.
Vice President McGraw?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinder?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Thank you. Then it's item J.
Filed items. Sorry. So we. I.
Any questions? We have to answer this.
Yeah, I had a question, well, a comment particularly on filed item number one. And you and I spoke about this a little bit yesterday, but I wanted to do it in this room, get on the record. But I, you know, appreciated seeing the building depopulation plan. I know what a big effort it's going to be to move everyone out of this building and into, you know, safe and accommodating places where our folks can continue to work well. But as part of that plan, obviously, we're going to have to move our, our board offices and our board meeting room to a place that's publicly accessible. I just want to get on the record and say that I want us to look into other options, options other than Eagle Rock for a couple reasons. One, I think we want to be more physically proximate to any GM, but particularly because by then, I think we'll have a new GM. And I think we, you know, we want to be able to advise him or her, be close to them, be in physical proximity to them, also to other executive leadership, the GM's office, the COO's office, others. I also want to make sure we're physically proximate to City Hall. We have a really important symbiotic relationship with the mayor, you know, for whom we all work, and we need to be close to her also. So I just wanted to pull this item and ask your office if we could do a little more investigation into other options before we go ahead and vote later on the Eagle Rock option.
We, we have a presentation to, to our president and then probably we'll bring it back to the board and have this discussion again on where, where the best fit is.
Let me add to that same thing. I did not lobby or speak to any of the individual commissioners, but what was just stated was almost verbatim as to how I feel, to the point of almost saying, a move to Eagle Rock is almost a deal breaker for me personally. So let me just say that. When it comes back to us, I'm already on the record as to how strongly I feel about that.
And, and I appreciate that a few of you have expressed that to me recently. So I will, we will continue to investigate other options that, that would be available to us to keep us, ourselves locally.
Marty, along that same line, my understanding was that during the pandemic, this building was pretty well closed down and it was remote access, or is that not?
We were always occupied, but we had people working remotely in shifts so that we didn't have too many people at one time. We probably, probably never had less than eight hundred people in a day in the building, although the normal occupancy is probably closer to three thousand. So, so, so we never really closed down per se, but we did function. And of course, board meetings were, were, were online, which of course is no longer allowed. So that was the, one of the differences.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Other comments?
So I just want to, on that issue, some clarification in the future is, one is where the board meetings are going to be, and one is where all of you that support the board and who are obviously active, where are you going to, where, where would you be?
So we're talking, we're just to put it in, the two-year period that it's going to take to actually go from the notice to proceed to the completion of this building, it's a two-year period. During those two-year period, wherever the board, this board will be, whatever, whether it's across the street or wherever we decide, the offices of the executive team will be in that location.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So that part is, I mean, again, we're all open for discussion, but these were things that, because we're kind of short on time and decisions have to be made and the timing has to be done in synchronizing with the depopulation of this building, we'll bring it to the board and reevaluate the options we have.
Appreciate it, Gus.
And maybe you should, like, in the next time, sort of describe why we're going to be depopulating. I like that part, but word, never thought of.
Yeah, I think the two-year period was something that we worked from, it was a seven-year period, we worked it down to a, the shorter the distances between the notice to proceed, this building has to be 100% vacated.
No, I know, but it's about air quality.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, for asbestos.
Asbestos, so, yeah, we don't want to be around, we don't want to have that problem.
Yeah, we've exhausted every option we have in partial leave evacuation, all those things. So we'll bring all these details to the board.
Sure.
And make sure that we have a complete picture of what, how the decisions were made, where are we today, and what we need to do to move forward.
Okay.
But that two-year period is what we're looking for, is that this temporarily, this boardroom will be transported to the new location, but the offices and the staff around it will be wherever that decision is made.
I think the briefing that I had asked for, and I think board members need, because a good part of this board wasn't here when that decision was made.
Right.
And when you went through, all the people you went through that with already aren't here anymore, so, you know, just give us a heads up about why we're moving and where.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think we still have time to reverse some of these decisions that were made, but I just want to make sure the board is comfortable.
Right.
Because the time is what we are, we just have to have the boardroom ready and everything moved before we vacate this building.
Understood, understood.
Well, in your capable hands, I know that it will be, you know, that you will listen to us as well.
Yes.
And we, of course, will listen to you.
We will make sure that the board has something that they're very comfortable with.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for that.
Okay, thanks. So item 2 was deferred, item 3.
Minutes.
You have to do J now.
All right. I'm sorry. The minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody, any changes, corrections, anything? Without objection, all members present being recorded as aye votes.
Yes.
On the motion, on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Thank you. Okay. K2 is deferred, again. K3 is also deferred.
Yes. You're calling 4.
I'm calling 4 now.
All right, I'll step out for that. Please, someone alert me when you finish that decision.
Were there any questions on this item, or did we just call it special for her?
We called it, so she can...
Should I do a motion to approve?
Please.
Okay. Motion to approve item 4?
And a second?
Second.
Second, Brian. Leah, any comments in favor or opposition to item 4? Okay, without objection, all members present being recorded as aye, except for...
Yes. Four ayes, motion adopted.
And one abstention?
And one recusal.
Recusal, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And then we had item 8, I think.
All right. Are we going to let the board member know that we're, so he can come back? Okay, item 8.
The speaker is Manelli Rashidin. Speaker, please be mindful that you will have a total of five minutes to address the agendized item.
Good morning, everyone.
Can you speak closer, right into the mic, please?
Is it better?
Yes, good.
So I have had, unfortunately, I have five grievances. So if I want to cover five grievances in five minutes, so it means that I need to talk one minute about each grievance, so that's almost impossible. You know, some of these grievances, they are from three years ago. We, it took three years so that it gets to this level. And during the hearing, the personal committee, they said that because of the backlog, they cannot give us more than like five minutes. That was not the case before, like, they were hearing whatever the grievance had to say. But then I had five minutes for each grievance for personal committee, and then now I got responses, and they are full of, unfortunately, full of like falsified information. I need to talk about that, I need to explain that. So if I want to just talk in five minutes, I should say, if I may, I request to kind of, I don't know, defer the, this item so that more investigation can be done, because the grievance responses are full of like false information.
I can offer a little bit of visibility, at least on the beginning of Ms. Rashidon's point. As the chair of the Personnel Relations Committee, we are working through a backlog of cases, but for both that reason and just for the efficiency of the committee's working as chairman, I did set a time requirement, but an equal time requirement, both from the grievance and from management. It's five minutes. The committee that me and I sit on takes the grievance documentation really seriously, and we review everything before the grievance even comes to the podium to present their case or to argue specific points of it. And I also want to, you know, mention that Ms. Rashidon, like, management had five minutes per grievance, and as she mentioned, there were four or five grievances included in this one hearing. I am, I'm confident with the help of our folks in personnel relations in what we've submitted as committee members to this board for approval today, but that's all I'll offer.
May I say something? So the grievance responses I received, Commissioner McGraw says, first of all, I should thank you for the hearing that we had, because that was the first time ever, almost first time, that somebody, like some hearing officer, they ask relevant questions, like Commissioner Lehrer and Commissioner McGraw, they really ask like relevant questions. But then in the grievance response, again, we see they are identical to the other levels, like, none of the logic, none of the discussions that Commissioner McGraw brought up, they reflected in the grievance response. I can't understand that. And then you are saying that they had five minutes also, but then how come in five minutes all this information was provided? Like, we had five minutes. It's not possible to provide information in five minutes and it's become like four pages. I could provide something like maybe two paragraphs, but then how come they had that much of time?
The response to the grievance isn't just what anyone said in the meeting, it's an amalgamation of everything that's been reported at every grievance level, our findings and what you shared with us in that meeting. And it's specifically focused on the substantive nature of the grievance as a breach of MOU or not, depending on the case. And I think that in this case, your grievance response speaks specifically to whether there's been a breach of agreement there in this MOU issue. And so I appreciate that the document does not completely reflect all of your argumentation. It's not meant to. It's just meant to render sort of our opinion on whether or not there was a breach.
I feel like it's mostly the opinion of the management, and it's like four pages of their opinion, and it's like one paragraph or two paragraphs of what I said, but that's not an actual problem. The problem is, a lot of this information is false. So they provided false information, and I feel like there's no way to fact-check that. So how can we address that? I was trying to explain right now, and I brought like documentation to show those like items are false, but then if I don't have time to do so, so I don't know.
Well, I'm sure that's what the committee took into account in preparing the report and the recommendations that came out of the hearing. They clearly didn't, I would assume, did not find, take issue with what was presented.
That's correct.
From a factual standpoint, there's obviously a disagreement. You have a point of view, which obviously you're entitled to, as did the committee, based on the work they did, and that's what's reflective in what's before us today.
Yeah, I mean, this is science. The lines are, it's not about disagreement, this is about the facts. Like, I have documentation that, for example, signing an acknowledgement form a few hours later does not cause the lab to lose certification. But what is, what is our, like, who can justify a supervisor which puts like false information in an official NTCD document? Again, in that response, it says it causes like penalties to the lab. It doesn't. I have like voice, I had videos of the official ELAB assessor, the person, like our regulators, they said, like, clearly they said that this is not the case, that's the false information. So how come we can make decisions based on false information? I can't understand that. And there's no time for me. I gathered a lot of documentation, but then how much I can present in five minutes, and five minutes in R and D?
I assume you presented that documentation to the commission, committee when they met?
Yes, but then, again, those false information identical to the previous level they showed in the responses, unfortunately.
Well, I'm going to take a rough guess at this since I didn't sit in the hearing, but I think that the committee that reviewed it looked at the facts and came to a different conclusion than you have. I mean, that's my guess, based on what, I mean, and unfortunately, sometimes that happens.
In just one case, that I have the voice and the videos of the auditor saying that there's no like negative impact because of signing that form a day later. So how come, again, in the response, we have something against that?
Well, again, I think you presented your case and the facts is you believe them. The committee did their research and the facts is they believe them, and there's obviously a disagreement on what that means, but what's before us is the recommendation from the committee and the result of the committee's hearing. And that's, that's all we can address here.
Yeah, so would that be fine, that the grievance, like the recommendation, the basis of decision is false, at least part of it?
Well, I understand that's what you believe, but I don't believe that's what the committee who heard your appeal.
Yeah, because like second-hand information and false information was provided to them, unfortunately, so...
They had the ability to accept it or reject it, so they obviously, you know, spent time looking at it and, you know, and again, there's a disagreement between the truth that you believe it to be and the facts as the committee found.
So I don't know what option I have, which I don't know.
I'm not sure what the next option would be after this.
Marty, is there anything further than Personnel Committee?
I don't believe there is another option. I don't know, leave relations here to clarify that, but I think this is, this is the final authority on any kind of grievance that's...
Right.
So respectfully, I feel like I was not heard, because whatever I said, it was like I didn't say it, it was not taken into consideration, unfortunately.
I think my guess is that, I mean, what I'm understanding is it was taken into consideration, they just had a different perspective on it, and...
I can say that. On behalf of the, on behalf of the committee, Mia, you can disagree if you, if you need to, but Ms. Rashidon, we did, we did take all of the evidence you presented into deep consideration, and we did decide the matter in a way that I know is unfavorable to you, but we did deeply consider all the evidence you brought to the committee, and we appreciated your time.
Some of them are science, some of them is pure science, there's no other way, you know? Some things, they are like, yes, disagreement, but something is science, it has a very fine line, like defined line. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Within the city process and the department process, this is as far as it goes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the committee's work also, thank you. George, thank you. Let me say, right? Don't make, I'm just mumbling. Okay, closed session.
Need to vote on that.
We have to vote on that item.
Vote on that, on the break.
Is there anything else that you want to add, George, before we move this forward?
No, I, I'll show my confidence by moving to adopt item 8.
Okay. Second?
Second. Second.
Any objection, all members present being recorded as aye votes? Without objection, motions...
Five ayes, motion adopted.
Five, zero. Okay. Now closed session.
The board shall recess into closed session for a conference with legal counsel regarding the items listed on agenda item 11. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.